This conference will now be recorded.
Issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. And we'll go ahead and start with board communications. And Commissioner Banks? You're muted.
And then I think I just made everybody disappear. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I haven't been as busy this week as I was last, which part of me kind of appreciates. I have a couple liaison meetings this week set up. I did wanted to make note that Cannon Beach is doing a fabulous children's art contest. And I just wanted to say hooray for getting our kids involved. We received the flyers and the kids are excited to participate. And so I just wanted to do a little shout out in regards to that because my kids are excited and all of the kids here that I work with are excited. So yeah, anyhow, that's about it for me.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, I'm interested in roads. I'm interested in roads and drainage. In my neighborhood around the county, I've been, I've been looking at things here with the advantage of the oversight of the Public Works Director. So looking at how to, how to have a more comprehensive, inclusive look at how roads and drainage goes into our strategic plan going forward. So that's one thing. Another thing is, I saw this article in the Oregonian on Thursday, February 25th. Oregon led U.S. interest in armed militia and conspiracy theories. And they're quoting Joseph Lowndes, who says that the state has been a long time home to right wing militia activity. Third years ago by the reduction in federal timber payments and increasingly limited government services in some rural areas. Militia's moved in to take up some of that work to act as first responders. But what that leaves out for me is what I'm also hearing about is what they call a cave recovery, where some folks are doing okay on COVID and some folks are doing really badly. So some folks are trending up, some folks are trending way down. Can somebody mute, please?
Can everybody put their mics on mute, please?
Thank you. So there's a widening gap between rich and poor, and that's really a concern to me because a healthy economy, in my mind, is a reduced gap between rich and poor so that there is adequate and stable income for all the people and for the community as we live and work together and provide community services. So looking at roads, looking for the road forward both. Thank you, sir. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
Good afternoon, everyone. No, just only one item to report is had a meeting with the Public Works Director, Assistant Director, and Engineer at our dealership facility to physically show them our blue pits. And some of the questions we had as we're looking at the new Public Works facilities, great discussions. I think there's a lot of lessons that they learned on the trip and we were able to, you know, give me some more information about what they learned. And I think going forward, everybody has a really solid idea of what needs are necessary. It would be a much better process moving forward.
We still have someone whose microphone is on. If you could make sure you turn it off if you're not speaking and not presenting. Thank you.
That was all.
That's all. All right, Commissioner Toyoka, sorry about that. Commissioner Webb?
Yes. The Public Works Resiliency Project moves along. Unfortunately, neither of us commissioners were able to go on a two day field trip that the staff took to look at other newly constructed Public Works facilities. But I think we both got in a good briefing about what they saw. And we have another extended meeting this afternoon in fact to, to go over some of the findings, et cetera. But it's an exciting project. It's, it's, I'm very impressed with the way McKenzie is proceeding with it. We, it seems that we have a good consultant and, and the process is fun. I always love building things. And our staff, incidentally, is being, they're being really terrific about, about their expectations for this. So this is, it's been really good. So I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. The only things I had, I, Commissioner Thompson was talking about roads and drainage and I went out to the airport yesterday with the City of Warrenton Public Works Department and the Port of Astoria and looked at drainage and tide gates and issues that might impact development at the airport. Obviously, it's very critical when you have a Coast Guard base and you have a new development proposed in, is it Scholler, Scholler? I always get it wrong, Schuler or Scholer, one of, one of the two businesses that are going to locate out at the airport. So I think that there's going to be some, some work done to evaluate the hydrology out at the airport and make sure that it's consistent with what the development plans are out there. And I also testified at the Housing Committee, Senate Bill 622, had a hearing before the Housing Committee last Friday, I believe. And it went, and it went well. I think it's going to be referred to the Ways and Means Committee. And I'll provide testimony at that as well, but it moves forward. And that's all I have. County Manager, do you have anything?
Thank you, Chair Quayle. I just want to introduce Margot Lealich. She's on the line today, our new interim Public Health Director. She'll be giving a brief Public Health update and, and give a little background in a few minutes here, but thank you.
Fantastic. I'll turn it over to Margot.
So I'm just going to double check. You can hear me okay, everyone? We've had some issues getting the go to meeting to, to work properly at my desktop. So hello to all of you. It's a lovely opportunity to be able to reconnect with the Board of County Commissioners. I've lived in Clatsop County since the late eighties and have spent much of my career here, not the last 10 years, and both in the private sector and then also in parallel to public health. But my real passion and dedication is public health and served as the Public Health Director until 2013. And so I'm back. I've been working on some other projects and most recently returned from a two year project helping Hawaii develop its statewide school based health system. So was there for the beginning of the pandemic as well. I can offer you an update and happy to answer any questions. I will tell you that I have been following what's going on in Clatsop County from a distance. This has continued to remain my home. I live in Cannon Beach. But, and I've been a volunteer vaccinator, which has been such a great pleasure and such a lovely way to reconnect with the community, even though stressful the pandemic has been for all. But I'm getting up to speed. I started yesterday back in this position, so I'm up to speed and I can give you a bit of an update from the task force notes effective yesterday, 3-1. A total number of doses that have been delivered are 6,555. We're at a goal of 8.6% of the most at risk populations being vaccinated. There is a vaccine task force, as you are sure well aware, and it meets every morning at 9:00 a.m. I've had the opportunity to attend one of those meetings thus far. So I just wanted to share with you what the goals are for this week. More vaccine is going to be coming in and you may have heard that Johnson &amp; Johnson has also been received emergency authorization use. So we expect those vaccines to be coming to Clatsop County as well. We're getting ready to have our first very large event, relatively speaking, on the 11th of March. So there'll be 1,000 first doses given. We'll be vaccinating all day, it looks like, from about 10 to 5:00 p.m. So we're looking at four hour shifts, split shifts, and working on staffing for that at this time. And then that second dose event will be on April 7th. And then we continue to have vaccine clinics at Seaside High School. We had one last night as well. I was there. And then at the Astoria Fairgrounds. It's just, you know, every clinic you get more information, you refine operations, but it's really impressive. There's this, this time allotted for vaccinations and it's such a dedicated team and the volunteers becoming more seasoned and people are moving through much quicker than the schedule, the published schedule. But part of it is even though people are scheduled to come for a 15 minute slot, especially yesterday, it was so nice out, everybody just came at once. So there was quite a long line going out of the high school, but we moved them through quickly. Notifications, I think, are going out in postcard. I can't share with you much detail about that at this point in time. I'm, I don't want to assume, but I'm going to assume, I don't like to assumptions, that you all receive the vaccine bulletin. Some of the things that we're working on solidifying is transportation for those where it's a barrier or a complete issue, reaching hard to reach populations, particularly those who even with support, transportation support, just simply can't get out. So doing maybe strike teams to go out to the homebound and get them vaccinated as well, difficult to reach populations. So that conversation's beginning. Now that I'm on board and with my past experience, I will be rotating the site lead role with Chris, who definitely deserves a break from doing that most of the time, and Julie, who's the lead pharmacist at Providence Seaside Hospital. So I'm really happy that they'll get a little bit of reprieve and I'll be able to support them in that role. Things are getting better at the PIC. I was up there yesterday and I have meetings scheduled with Tiffany Brown. I'm going to be connecting with Vincent and others who have been integral to building this response. Looking to see, I think that's about it, probably five minutes, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah. Can you clarify for me what the role of the various pharmacies in Clatsop County is going to be?
Yes, I'll do my best to answer that question. And if I don't do it sufficiently, I will make sure to get you that information. So based upon the calls that I've been on, and I should say that I have been in all the statewide calls for many, many months. I've been supporting Columbia County with some of their pandemic response efforts as well. Is that there has been a small allocation going to, I think Costco Pharmacy, Safeway Pharmacy, and Rite Aid, a very small number of doses, like 100 doses. But they don't have the capacity to handle a large number of people showing up for vaccinations. If you get your flu shot at Safeway Pharmacy, you know that you may end up waiting a little while while they're filling prescriptions. And that's not going to change. So while they can be a resource, I think further, further down the line, when more and more people get vaccinated and the COVID vaccine becomes more routine, I think they'll play a more critical role. I do know I haven't sat in those meetings yet, obviously, but I will be that Chris has been meeting with subgroups of the population. Some of the providers in the community are private providers who aren't part of Providence or Columbia Memorial Hospital, as well as other groups, to start planning for that outreach. Because eventually our, our primary care providers are going to be vaccinating and that's what we want. We want a broader distribution of vaccines. So that's all I can share with you at this point in time, but I don't expect our local pharmacies to play a huge, a huge role in it.
Any other? Well, thank you, Margot. Appreciate the update and we're so glad to have you on board. I know you've hit the ground running your two days in the job, but I know how excited Chris and Julie are to have you in a leadership role and be able to, to work with you on the site leads at the vaccine clinic. So thanks again for the update.
Thank you.
We'll move on and we actually have CBH scheduled as our fourth item, but I know that you've got conflict there, Amy, correct? So let's go ahead and we'll move you up in the order here. We'll have a update from Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare and I know the sheriff is on as well.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Quayle. And thank you for letting me skip to the front of the queue. I have to testify to the Oregon State Legislature at one and complain about how little money they give us, among other things. Oh, excellent. So. I have been made to share and I'm going to, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. So I know we have a couple of, we have, so for the record, my name is Amy Baker and I'm the Executive Director for Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare. And I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about our, our role in the community as well as the role of the county commissioners, because I know we have, we have two new county commissioners and I have no idea if they covered this in your orientation. But basically, we are the contractor of Clatsop County and the Clatsop County Commissioners play the role of the local mental health authority. And essentially, the core functions of what the local mental health authority oversees is basically the safety net services. It's the safety net services in the community that, that were available for crisis, that if somebody becomes a danger to themselves or others, that we're able to step in and facilitate some of those processes, although obviously our local hospitals have a role in that too. We provide services for uninsured and underinsured people so that individuals who are like very ill can still get care even if they don't have, their insurance isn't, cover the cost of care. And we coordinate care through all levels. So if, if we have individuals from the community who go into the state hospital or residential facilities due to mental health reasons, we make sure that we help facilitate that. And then there's, there's kind of the, the overall system oversight, which the Board of County Commissioners are responsible for. Within Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare itself, we're not for profit. We have about 100 employees. We have 16 programs and services, five sites sprinkled throughout the county, staff in four school districts, and we serve all ages, including our Happy Happy Baby Pilot, which we take referrals for helping new parents with babies all the way to serving the elderly. I believe the technical term is cradle to grave, but that doesn't sound very good, so I try not to say it. But it is very descriptive. And just to give you a sense, this is like, this is approximately how many folks come into service in any given month. And the dark blue is adult and the light blue is kids. And so it ranges from, it ranges from 40 to 70 and it tends to be, it tends to be pretty seasonal. This looks like, this is data on which programs clients are currently in. Recovery Allies is our, that's our, our program that does outreach for individuals who are struggling with substance use disorders. Psych Child, Psych Adult, those are for psychiatric services, so medical prescribers. And there's basically a whole, whole host of services. These are not unique clients. There's a lot of crossover between some of the programs. And I want to talk a little bit about, about one of our, one of our biggest challenges at this point. This is not going to be news to anybody in this room, but I, any chance I can get to talk about it, I will. And so there's a lot of misunderstandings around how it is that people end up becoming homeless. And Zillow did a study on 386 real estate markets and what they found is that when people are spending over 30% of their income on rent, homeless rates go up dramatically. And that is for sure what's happening in Clatsop County. About 32% of Clatsop County residents are spending at least 30% of their income on housing. The reason why I think this is an important piece of information is that it's often easy to say, well, people are homeless because they have mental health issues and substance use disorders. And, and while there is, there is some truth to that, the reality is, it is actually the cost of housing that is, is creating our homeless crisis. And it's really hard to treat people with mental health disorders and substance use disorders when they don't have a safe place to live. And in fact, evidence based practice is that if you provide supportive housing, it decreases people's reliance on psychiatric hospitals and emergency rooms and jails. So it is not, not only best practice, but it's also in our financial best interest to, to be able to provide those resources. And this, this is a little bit of data on what our current clientele looks like. Really only 6% of our CBH clientele is, is transient slash homeless. And you can see the vast majority are in private residences. So this is, so this is not to say that, that we're doing such an excellent job that only 6% of our clientele is homeless. What this data speaks to when I look at it is that people who are homeless are not staying in services because it's not their, when, when you're living on the street, survival becomes the, the primary objective and being able to make it to appointments and, you know, following through on therapeutic recommendations, all of those things become less important than shelter food and all those kinds of basic Maslow's hierarchy needs. So. This is the conversation that I'm, that I'm excited about, that I think we need to be having. And that really is around what does an effective system of care for adults look like? And, and there's not, unfortunately, there's not like one thing that we need, like there's a series of things that we need in order to be able to move people within the continuum and help them and help them get out of crisis. And the first is around mobile response. Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare currently has a mobile crisis team. We're very proud of it, but we're also aware of the limitations that the state currently only funds us to the level to have one person working across the county at any given time. There's a lot of discussion statewide around, is it better to do co-response, which means having behavioral health experts or clinicians go out with law enforcement, or the cahoots model, which is a diversion from law enforcement altogether, requiring 911 to carefully screen and send the cahoots fan out. I think there is a case that can be made for either in this particular county, given the fact that we have multiple 911 centers, co-response might be easier. But having mobile response in and of itself is not, is not going to help address the behavioral health, all the behavioral health need that we're seeing. We also have to have a place for folks to go. And that looks a lot like a crisis stabilization center. I know there had been discussion about the North Coast Crisis Respite Center being that crisis stabilization center. And what we have found over the years operating it is that it's really hard to put people who are in psychiatric crisis into a treatment environment where people are living there full time at the same time. It's, you know, it's, it's sort of like what would happen to your household if you brought somebody in who was really struggling and you're trying to maintain the stability of everybody else. And so the conversations that we've been having internally around this is potentially not using the North Coast Crisis Respite and Residential, but could we, could we use our Bond Street site to serve more of this function so that there's a place we're pleased to drop folks off in, in the event that folks are, are in crisis? The other piece of the continuum that I think is really critical is transitional shelter, low barrier, space where people can have their own space, their own room, so they're not trying to do a dormitory style shelter, staffed by, you know, staffed 24/7. Residential services, we already have. Crisis respite, we already have. And permanent supportive housing, we don't have. And that's a, that's a critical piece of this continuum because if, if, when the crisis is resolved, if people don't have a long term, safe, stable place to live, then they're going to continue to circle through the, through the crisis system. And actually, let me just, Matt, did you, oh, sorry. Chief Sheriff Phillips, did you want to jump in and say something here?
Well, I could, I could ramble on about any of these topics probably, but I think you're, you're spot on. Whether it's mental health or our own parole probation client, housing is certainly a stabilizing factor and very critical. I don't know if we want to do like a question and answer thing later or where you want me to jump in. I guess I'll leave that to the commissioners.
I wonder if it would be helpful, I wonder if it'd be helpful to talk a little bit about, because this question often comes up, like we see people who are in crisis, like, you know, it's really obvious that somebody's struggling. And, and often what I hear is, why isn't CBH doing anything? And.
I can tackle that one a little bit.
Why?
Because, yeah, because it's the same problem for law enforcement is ultimately, you know, in the early seventies, when Oregon deinstitutionalized, they had a good group of stakeholders kind of lay out the roadmap for what to do to help people in crisis. And since then, the Oregon Court of Appeals has really changed the landscape on, on the process to commit someone civilly. The Oregon Court of Appeals certainly values liberty much above an individual's well being unless the threat to well being is imminent and very serious. And, and the, the primary concern has always been preserving someone's liberty and avoiding stigma. But I think most people would agree that someone who is suffering a serious mental illness is probably not wholly at liberty or free from stigma. The, the consequence certainly of having a very limited civil commitment process is, is that it then diverts people to criminal justice system, which certainly has greater stigma and potentially greater loss of liberty. And so I guess what I'm getting at is there's a very, very high bar to compel someone to engage in services, even, even if they're right on the cusp of meeting that threshold, we can't compel him or her to, to engage in services. Certainly, the mobile, you know, crisis response team is great. I would certainly like to see that team expanded, but there is times where we cannot compel someone, we can't, we can't do something, right? We can reach out and certainly repetition is sometimes helpful, you know, being consistent and reaching out to people. Right? We can reach out and certainly repetition is sometimes helpful, you know, being consistent and reaching out to people. But sometimes we can't legally compel someone to engage in services or to get treatment. And, and the hospitals have the same thresholds to work with it. So it's difficult.
It, it is difficult. And so 99% of what we do is based on, is based on voluntary clients, clients who are wanting assistance from us. And, and even if they don't want assistance from us, we tend, the people who really need us, we tend to track and keep tabs on and we check in with, we're kind of like a bad penny. We keep showing up. But that, but that doesn't mean that, that they have to accept our help. The other thing that I wanted you all to be aware of is Senate Bill 295, which has to do with aid and assist. Right now they're like the, the number one way that individuals are getting into the state hospital is because they get into some sort of trouble with the law and, and either the judge or the attorney questions whether they're able to aid and assist in their own defense. And, and there are times when while we're trying to get them to the place where they can aid and assist in their own defense, they do what is known as community restoration. And the county councils of some of the biggest counties such as Lane County and Clackamas and Multnomah have all made a fuss about the fact that Senate Bill 295 does not absolve the counties of liability when somebody's in community restoration, because obviously we, we can't compel people to treatment and we are not respond, I mean, we, we can't ensure that they're going to not do something bad while they're in the community. And there are other, there are other services that we do where that, that freedom from liability exists. So from what I've heard from my, my compatriots is that they're actually considering not signing the IGA because, because of Senate Bill 295, like it's a big enough deal that, that Multnomah, Lane and Clackamas are pushing back on this thing. So I just, I wanted you all to be aware of that. And I'm obviously keeping, keeping close tabs on that.
Can I add a little bit to that, Amy?
Yes.
Part of it is, so someone comes in to jail after committing a crime. And then they're ordered to the state hospital because they need a hospital level of care. Well, what the state hospital has decided to do is once they don't need a hospital level of care, regardless of they're able to aid and assist, once that, that true imminence is, is dissipated, then they're sent back to the jail. And then we're supposed to have a hearing, I believe, every week to determine whether we can send that person to community restoration. Of course, there's no money that came with this to, to support Amy and her staff in providing this service. This is another example where the state says, you know, not our problem anymore. Send them back to the, the county and then the rest of the story like, like Amy just described. Still someone with acute needs, but we're being told to put them back in the community, even if we don't have the resources or, or the supports for that person.
That's, that's correct.
Commissioner Webb had a question. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah. I think I understand that, that people who are on OHP, what if they, when they are put in jail, they are taken off of OHP?
That's correct.
Is, is anybody doing anything in this session to correct that issue?
It's, it's a, it's a federal issue. It's not, it's a, it's a federal issue. The, the federal government did not want to be responsible for the healthcare of individuals while they're incarcerated. And so, so the way that our state has solved that is just by cutting off the, the Oregon Health Plan while, while they're in jail. And it's, it's terrible and it's ridiculous and it, and it doesn't make any sense. Yeah.
No, I can tell you Sheriff Tim Swenson, he's the president of Oregon State Sheriffs Association this year. He has been working on that project for two years. OSSA has, you know, written and sent letters to all of the state representatives. And I'll see where it goes, but I, I think it is a true disservice. It would certainly save the county money. And, and and we always combat, you know, this is another stabilizing factor for when someone's released from jail. So we have a program where we have assisters come to the jail. It's every other week to sign people up. So that once, for people we know their release date. So that their services will be restored, you know, closer in time to their release date.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to, and of course, uh, always available for questions, but just some of the positives that we're working on right now. The Rapid Access Center, it's really dependent on being able to hire, which has also been a challenge in part due to the housing issue I just mentioned. But we're, we're at least looking at starting our, our Bond Clinic, which is basically no, no required scheduled time. People can just walk in and get help. Regardless of insurance, any of that, we will at the very least, like work with somebody on a short-term basis. And, and if they do have private insurance, we'll try to get them connected to one of the community providers if, if we don't take that private insurance. We think that will be, we think that will be helpful. Ultimately, I would love the Rapid Access Center to be 24/7, but we, we don't have, we don't have the funding or the staffing capacity for that. I want to say like I have an amazing leadership team, like this, this past 12 months has been a real challenge. As you, as you all know, it has been a challenge. And in addition to dealing with our own challenges, like we have staff who show up for other people every single day. And I'm so impressed by their commitment and energy. Like I'm, I'm just really blessed to have the staff. I have really strong board. Our board understands like where we need to go to, to, to be a better resource to this community. We're not, there's, there's more to do. We're looking at developing permanent supportive housing. There's so much more to do. And I have the right people there. And then just some of the challenges that you can imagine, people are tired, it's hard to find housing. And, and I think one of Clatsop's unique challenges is that we're like a rural county, except that we have urban problems in part due to our proximity to Portland, except that we have rural funding. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a double whammy there, but I don't want to end on challenges. I want to end on positives, saying that I just, I think, I think all problems are solvable. And I think we have, we really have the right term, team of folks to, to tackle it.
Commissioner Thompson asked a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Amy and Sheriff, let me commend your devotion, your perseverance, your skill, your heart, your compassion. I'm telling you, that last issue, that's the deal. Rural county, urban problems, rural funding. So that's the drum that I keep beating. I think the sheriff does. Amy, I think you do. I think we need to keep on beating that. Because what I see is a tendency to define the scope of problems in such a way that the wealth is even more concentrated in metropolitan areas. I think that is a recipe for disaster. So whatever you can do and we can do together to articulate the problem, to include it in our strategic plan, and then to execute in terms of lobbying, in terms of developing programs, in terms of collaborating for alternative responses. It has to be a community-wide response and it's got to be more than us. We don't have the wealth for it. So whatever we can do, please tell us and thank you.
Yes. Can, can somebody take the screen away from me? I can't figure out how to do it.
Any other questions for Director Baker or Sheriff Phillips? Commissioner Banks?
Well, I just wanted to make note, Director Baker, of how much I appreciate you verbalizing some of the things that have been rolling around in my brain, like the Rapid Access Center or I assume that would be very similar to a drop-in center for imminent needs. I'm hoping that that involves both pediatric and adult. I also loved that you addressed the housing crisis and possibly, and I don't know if we can look into possible renters assistance in, in this particular forum. And, and just, you know, being able to talk about that further, because I really do agree greatly that our housing crisis is leading into a lot of issues. And if we can solve one, hopefully it'll help us solve another. And then also I just, it, that Rapid Access Center really, really, really excites me. Just because as a previous high school teacher, I know how much are, how, how important it is for our, not only our high school students, but for those younger now that to be able to have an immediate resource when they're in need. I did have a question for you though. And that's in regards to wait times for new clients or new patients. Do you have like an average wait time for pediatrics and adults that you could share with us?
I do have that data and I, I can actually pull it together and send it to you.
Please.
Yeah, that's easy enough. I can tell you that we're required to, it's required to be under, I think it's 14 days. And I know, and I know that we hit that 90% of the time. For both adults and kids, but let me, let me pull together the most recent data and I will, and I will send that to, I will send that to you.
That's, that's awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it because it will help us in conversations when we're talking about rural county, urban problems and rural funding. Being able to really push that we, we have a need, we have a need, we have a need. So again, thank you for your time, both you and Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would just say that that Crisis Stabilization Center, I think that, that certainly is a need and many of us, I think naively so, thought that the Respite Center was going to address that and, and become the bridge between the hospital and, and jail. And I, I know that it, it hasn't done that and never probably was intended to be that, but it certainly is a glaring need within the community. But thank you, Director Baker, very much for the report. And thank you, Sheriff. We'll move on to the North Coast Watershed Council and Upper Nahalem Watershed Association Report, and that's on page three. And who will be presenting on this?
This is Celeste Lebo. I can present for the North Coast Watershed Association and I'm not sure if someone from the Upper Nahalem has joined the meeting.
We'll turn it over to you, Celeste.
Okay. So, um, thank you very much for giving us time to share about, share some information about our association. This came out of a conversation I was having with Commissioner Thompson. We were getting to know each other and talking about the different work that we do. And we both thought that this would be a good idea just to get folks acquainted with what we do in Clatsop County. So just go to a map here. This, I just want to double check. Can everybody see my screen and hear me well enough?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So, um, we are the North Coast Watershed Association and we are made up of a bunch of different watershed councils. And those folks that have lived in Clatsop County for a while may be familiar with their local watershed council. Folks out in Napa may be familiar with the Nicolai Wiki Up Watershed Council. Big Creek had their own watershed council for a while. Of course, we have the Skippanon. And then down in the Arch Cape and Cannon Beach area, we've always had the Cola Creek Watershed Council. And, um, our, our main work is funded through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. And through that work, they really try to encourage folks to come together and collaborate. So one of the things that we've done, it was really difficult for one person with funding for one staff person to manage all of those different councils in Clatsop County. So what we did is joined up to become an association. So that's why we're called the Watershed Association. And now we have what we call the River Council. That'll include Big Creek, Nicolai Wiki Up, Young's Bay and Skippanon. And then we have our Coastal Council and that's in the Cannon Beach, Arch Cape area. You can think of that council covering any area between Tillamook Head and Nea Connie. And so just to get you guys familiar with what watershed councils are, just in case you aren't familiar with them. We are a nonprofit, we're non-regulatory. And our primary mission is to improve watershed health through community-based efforts. And one of the things I really want to stress is that we are a volunteer-based organization. So our board, our staff, we do not decide what kind of work that we do out in the watershed. All of it comes from the bottom up. Those folks that are part of our watershed councils can bring projects to us and then we evaluate them as a council and then we present them to our board of directors. And then we go from there to look for funding and implement those projects on the ground. And so it's super important that not only are, are projects reflecting the interests and desires and needs of the community, but also that our board of director reflects all those voices that are in the watersheds. We have a very diverse board. We have folks that represent the private timber industry, folks that are community activists, some folks that look, work for other nonprofits like Land Trust. Our board chair works with Lewiston Clark National Historical Park. So folks from all different backgrounds and ideas, all bringing, all coming together to come up with solutions for improving the health of our watershed. And I think I covered most everything that's on that slide. So what I want to do is just to give you an idea of what kind of work that we're doing in Clatsop County. I'm going to highlight four projects that we're currently working on. One project that we're just getting funding for through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board is the Upper Big Creek Flood Plane Restoration Project. And, um, in the Nicolai Wiki Up Watershed, we do a lot of work with Hampton Lumber. They're our primary partner there. And so anytime Hampton has a project that could use a little bit of extra funding, that could be tied into one of their timber sales, we jump in and help. And this is a project that we're partnering on together. So just to get you oriented, Upper Big Creek, just to the south of Napa, east of Astoria, that big circle there. And here's just a shot of what it looks like up there. It's a beautiful part of the creek. If you're familiar with the mouth of Big Creek, you know, it's a lot different, slow-moving, filled with water. But up here in the higher area of the watershed, it's a fast-moving stream. So this particular project is designed to reduce the impacts of the legacy road. And so what will happen is we'll be removing two bridges, eight cross drains, one culvert and about 1,000 cubic yards of road fill. As part of the project, we'll also be installing about 16 large wood structures. And that's a very common technique that folks that are doing stream restoration will use. You try to slow down water. A lot of times our creeks are running too fast and they're scouring the bottom of the stream and they're taking all the wood, rock, everything down to the mouth of the stream. And then what happens is that higher up, there's nothing to catch that water and create pools where salmon, if they're migrating upstream, have places where they can build reds and, and spawn. That's the idea of large wood structure. That's the idea of large wood structures. Also, large wood holds sediment. So if you have a lot of work that's going on near a stream, and you have problems with sediment loads, which usually ends up down at the mouth of the river, putting in large wood can capture all of that sediment and slow that sediment deposition down. This is a great project. We're gonna be doing this project this summer. I'm working with Jed Arnold. He's their stewardship forester. And we're really excited about getting this one going. We've been talking about it for many years. And here's this, another shot of Big Creek. This is, I'm standing on the bridge. This is one of the bridges that's going to be removed, a really beautiful part of the watershed. And here's a map showing where the work is happening. All of those circles with, that are green with an L in it, that's where those large wood pieces are going to be added to the stream. And those two purple arrows, those are where the bridges are. We're gonna take out those two bridges. Another project that's happening down by Cannon Beach is the Cola Creek Watershed Beaver Creek Habitat Assessment. And this project is designed to assess what the beaver populations are in the Cola Creek Watershed. So here's a map, just to get you oriented. Of course, we're talking about the area around Cannon Beach, just east of town there. And those folks that live in Cannon Beach are very familiar with the Cola Creek Forest Reserve. So this project came from the community. As part of the Cola Creek Forest Reserve, they put together a stewardship plan. And in that stewardship plan, they had a goal of assessing what the beaver populations were in the forest reserve, and whether or not there was work that needed to be done to help support those populations, and how we could maintain existing populations. So this, they brought this to the watershed council, and we've been looking for funding for it, and have finally been able to secure that funding to do an assessment. And also on this map, I wanted to point out, if you look just outside of the blue squares to the, towards the west part of the map, you'll see an area called the Former Tertiary Treatment Area. And that's what's known as the City of Cannon Beach Lagoon Pond. And you guys have probably always seen this driving Highway 101. You have the recycling center that's on the west side, and then on the east side of Highway 101 are these large wetlands. And back in the day, this was a state-of-the-art water quality treatment system for Cannon Beach. And now they've become water retention areas. And also what's happened is that the beavers have decided to move in here. And so one of the things that we'll look at, and the city has been having some challenges with protecting infrastructure in this area, and then also within the Cola Creek Forest Reserve, which is the drinking water source for Cannon Beach, there's some beaver activity, activity that's happening near their pump station up there. So this isn't just a project to encourage more beavers. This is a project to find a solution to see how both the City of Cannon Beach can protect any of their infrastructure, their infrastructure around these areas, and then also how we could restore habitat for both beavers and salmon. Because we know when beaver populations are healthy, salmon populations are healthy. And so again, we're just looking at the goals of this project, which I've already mentioned. But this is another shot of the Cola Creek within the forest reserve. You can see it's a dynamic place. And then another project I wanted to mention is happening over in the Napa area as well. This is called the Blind Slough Wetland Reconnection Project. This project is just, just to the west of Napa docks, if you're familiar with that area. And the big snaking stream that's coming out and flowing out under the railroad tracks there, that's Little Creek and Big Creek coming together to empty into Napa's slough. And within the circle, that red polygon represents a two-acre wetland. And again, this is a project where we're partnering with Hampton Lumber. The yellow line that you see is an old relic road that Hampton built back in the day to get logs up from the railroad track up to their shopyard. But they no longer use that as a road and don't need it anymore. And so by removing that road, we'll be able to reconnect the Blind Slough Swamp, which is owned by the North Coast Land Conservancy, the conservation property. We'll be able to connect that wetland to that two acres of wetland. And you can see, talking about beavers again, we got this big beaver dam right there at that two-acre wetland in that circle. It's hard to see how big it is, but this is a really, really big beaver dam. And this is a place where a beaver could, you know, work all day, all night, and never bother anybody. So this is a great place to work with beavers. And again, as I mentioned, our project goals are to remove 200 feet of road fill. And so our part in the project will be securing the funding to hire a design consultant to put together plans for Hampton Lumber. And then they'll be pulling the road this summer. There's another shot of the wetland. This is the railroad tracks along this slough. And then in the back where those trees are, that's where the road is. And then the last project I wanted to mention is Return of the Red. The North Coast Watershed Association has been working with about 15 different partners to develop a Chum Strategic Action Plan. And the main goal of this project is to revitalize the chum populations in the lower Columbia estuary, specifically in the Big Creek and Young's Bay watershed. So we know that chum are like a keystone species. The, if the chum populations are thriving, then all the other salmon populations are doing well, too, because chum are really specific where they spawn in the watershed. They're the last to come in and the first to leave. And so they really stay down low at the mouth of the river. And that's usually where the most impact is happening to the watershed, is down at the bottom of the river where everything flows and settles out. So we believe that if we can really focus on helping chum populations in our region, then we'll be able to increase the health of all of our salmon populations. So we put together the Strategic Action Plan. We've just finished it. And we're going to have it available on our website soon for folks to look at. But lots of different folks were involved in it. We had people from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Greenwood was on the, Lewiston Clark, the main private timber companies. We had Noah was involved, community members, tribes, all giving their input on the best way to restore chum in our area. And so one of the things I wanted to mention before I finish is that, as I was describing, we have both a river council and a coastal council. And we, right now especially, it's really easy to find out more about our work because, like all of you, we're doing virtual meetings. And so if you go to our website, it's listed right there, clotsetwatersheds.org, you can find our calendar. And on the, each month, it'll list the council meeting and a link to the Zoom event, so you could join our meeting. Our next coastal council meeting is on March 15th, and we're having Jessie Jones from Coast Watch do a presentation about her program. And then our river council meeting is on April 8th. And that meeting will present information about the Big Creek, Little Creek area. And I think it'd be really interesting for folks that live in that Nicolai Wicke Up watershed, because anybody that's been around for a while knows that right now, there's not much water in Little Creek, but there's a whole lot of water in Big Creek. And so that's a chance to learn more about why that's happening. And I guess I'll just open it up for questions. Does anybody want to learn, know more about anything specifically?
Any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, so Celeste Lebo and I were having these conversations, and I thought, oh my heavens, I want my colleagues to hear this. We can talk about biological diversity, we can talk about environmental health. And then I have the hope that if the chum population returns, there's some planning money that we weren't eligible to get because our chum population went down. So the planning director probably knows more about that, and it may be wishful thinking on my part. But I've got a tickler in my brain that, that lacking chum cost us. So I hope that the chum are charming. I remember Brenna Visser's immortal phrase about the bunnies in Cannon Beach, that bunnies do what bunnies do best. I hope that the beavers don't proliferate in the same way and cause another problem like the bunnies, though. Are you, are you pretty sure the beavers are gonna be a little more moderate in their proliferation? Thank you.
Well, working, one of the things that we're doing is, we're very aware of the complications that come from having very active beaver populations in communities. Because folks start dealing with flooding issues, we all deal with that anyway. But then sometimes it becomes even more of an issue if you have an active beaver population in the area. And so really what this project is about is about finding a way for both beavers and human infrastructure to be supported. So, and that's been done in lots of different communities. I would also encourage folks, we, if you're not aware, we have a Nature's Matter series that takes place in normal times, that takes place at Fort George Brewery, and it's a lot of fun. But right now, they're all virtual. And the next presentation that's happening on April 8th, or no, on the next March presentation, is about collaborating with beavers. And so there's some really active groups in Oregon that are working on this problem to find solutions. You can do things like beaver deceivers, and beavers think that they're doing what they normally do. They're plugging their dam, and they're making the water deep enough for their dens and their, to raise their young. But at the same time, they're not flooding anything, because the beavers don't realize it. But we're draining all that water, and we're making sure that their water levels stay lower than the infrastructure. So there's just, there's really creative ways and solutions that are happening. And so that's the, really the goal of this project, is to tap into that new knowledge that folks are learning. And I would just want to mention, too, listening to your conversations about public health, health of our kids, and, you know, just our economy in Clotset County. One of the things that we really take a lot of pride in is that all of these projects, when we hire out, we hire local, so we create jobs for the local economy. And we all know that getting outside is good for you, for your head. And so we get kids outside, community members outside. And it's just another way that we're trying to help with those ongoing problems that we're all dealing with.
Thank you, Celeste. I see Commissioner, question. Commissioner Banks?
Not really a question, but a comment. I had a really good conversation with Commissioner Thompson, you know, discussing collaborative versus competitive. And, and when, when things are collaborative, how much can be accomplished? And I just wanted to honor you and say thank you for what a wonderful collaborative effort that you are doing right now. Because we all can agree that watershed health is extremely important to clean, clean water, salmon populations, et cetera. And I just wanted to say, what an amazing job, and what, how awesome it is to hear such a collaborative effort between timber companies and environmental interest groups, and yourself, and how this association has created a better situation for our county overall. And being a Napa resident, I'm well aware of all, most of the locations that you've discussed. And, and my husband, we take our children out there regularly. And it's, and we watch the salmon runs off Big Creek. And so just thinking about the amazing work you guys are doing, and, and how it is a collaborative effort and not a competitive effort, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item. Did we have anything more on, on that item? Did we have the Upper Waters, Upper Nahalum Watershed Association? Are we, is that?
I'm assuming she didn't make the call. Her name was Maggie. And so I'm assuming she wasn't able to be on.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Celeste. Appreciate the update. We'll move on to ordinance amendments, use of county right-of-way on page 38. And Ted McLean is here.
Hello, Commissioners. Ted McLean, the Public Works Director. We're bringing to you today some proposed changes that we'd like to recommend to the board concerning the use of the county right-of-way. In specific, we've talked back on February 2nd about business ventures or commercial use of the county right-of-way. And so the recommended change is going to be commercial use and the right-of-ways prohibited. And so, except as provided in this chapter, or in a lease provided by the Board of Commissioners, no person shall use the right-of-way for commercial purposes. And then our council gave us good, clear description of what commercial use means. It means the use of the right-of-way for business or financial gain. The activity service or use in commercial of any per, if any person, group, organization makes or attempts to make profit, receive money, amortize equipment, obtain goods and services, as compensation, compensation from participants and activities occurring in the, in the right-of-way led, sponsored, or organized by that person, group, or organization. Profit-making organizations and organizations seeking to make a profit are automatically classified as commercial, even if that part of their activity covered by the permit is not profit-making, or the business as a whole is not profitable. So I think it's covered in a whole as what commercial means in the right-of-way. So we're asking that it would be prohibited. And then we also have some changes to our permits that we're making along with this, changes such as some of the restrictions that we have on roads that we prohibit heavy hauling on certain roads. We're going to remove some of that, because we've repaired those roads, and now they're acceptable for use. I think the only road we have a restriction on is Young's River Road, from Miles Crossing out to Tucker Creek. And then we had to update some of our road standards and requirements that we have for repairs of utilities and roads and things such as that. But the main focus is the amendment to the ordinance of commercial use in the right-of-ways being prohibited. And that's what we would like to recommend. So we're seeking your direction to be able to move forward. And if we can move forward, we'd have the, would bring the ordinance before the board at our first reading on March 10th, and the second reading and adoption of the ordinance, March 24th. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, so we've got Commissioner Banks.
Um, just, just a quick question. So when we're talking about commercial and making a profit, are we also including within that, this recommendation, are you also including within that, like, our little tiny roadside flower stands? Or are those considered, like, non-commercial activities?
If, I think the description mentions any activity where someone is making money.
Okay, okay.
And it could be even a nonprofit. So it's all those activities, flower stands, selling maybe produce. Flower stands, selling maybe produce, things such as that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Smith is on the call, very interested in the results of our deliberation today. So just help me be clear. We're not prohibiting the activity, per se. We're just saying it can't happen in the right-of-way. Is that clear?
Yes, it can't happen in the right-of-way. They can do something on their own property and gain access to their property, but we would prohibit it in the right-of-way. We spoke also, I think, about signs. And we haven't totally addressed the sign issue yet, but there has to be a permit to put a sign or a restriction on the size of sign and when it would be accepted and where it would be placed in the right-of-way.
So if I could just do a follow-up. If somebody had a concern that they had had a going business in the right-of-way and they could make an access point from that right-of-way onto their property, would they then be allowed to continue their business?
As long as it's on their property.
As long as it's on their property and not in the right-of-way. I just want to nail that one down. Okay.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Sheriff Phillips.
What if the right-of-way goes through someone's property, but there's not actually a county road built?
Good question. Yeah. I have Terry speaking behind me, but I can't hear him.
Maybe I can address that question. You know, I think for the most part, we're a complaint-driven process. I don't think we're going to probably get complaints about people operating in right-of-ways that are not built. But, you know, we would address that if we came across it. But yes, county right-of-way would cover those at property, even though it's not including the roadway. So it would be the full county right-of-way. Does that help?
Commissioner Webb.
Yeah, I have a question. Presently, Ted, for county roads, if anyone wants to build a road or driveway, any kind of access or egress point, must they seek permission from us?
Yes, they have to have a permit.
Okay. No matter what it is?
No matter what it is in the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. And the standards for that, are they, I mean, what, you know, minimum lengths between, things like that? And what?
Yes, site distance requirements, all having to do with safety. They're all addressed in the permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Commissioner Banks.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to verbalize, I guess, a bit of disappointment on my part just because I feel like this, there should be some separation between commercial and hobby-type situations. Just because I know in our personal area, in the unincorporated communities, and I think it's, you know, that those flower stands that are on the side of the road, though they don't create an income, per se, it's something that is part of our community out here. And so I guess I'm expressing some concern that because this is going to be kind of a full stop, removing those types of situations available to our community, it's causing a little bit of concern because then I'm also thinking about our book share bins that we have and other things that could potentially be present in a county right-of-way. And so I was hoping for a little bit of delineation between commercial and hobby-type situations. Because, you know, there's just things out here in our unincorporated area, mine specifically, that I would be disappointed to see missing. And so I guess I was just hoping for a little bit more wiggle room for folks that, you know, they're just wanting to put their tulips out. They're not looking for a profit. They're just gardeners. So.
And I think a large part of this comes to liability in the county right-of-way. And there's always a term that I've heard from attorneys, "no good deed goes unpunished." So if we try to do something like that in the county right-of-way, it could be very damaging to the county.
Commissioner Toyoka had a question there.
Well, just a comment question. I know on the right-of-way issue, I think the overall concern should be safety. You know, this is the overriding principle. You know, I've seen it even on Highway 101 where there's flower stands and people have stopped in the right-of-way areas, not county road, obviously, in this case. But, you know, the vehicle sticks into the highway and it's not safe. So it's kind of hard to say that this is okay, that isn't. I think it has to be an overriding principle of safety, you know, that has to guide this change.
Commissioner Webb.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of safety and liability. And I, you know, I just fear that in some of these cases, when someone stops along the roadway and causes some kind of a major accident, excuse me, a major crash, then looking at all the people involved in ownership in that radius, the county has the deepest pockets. And so we are the ones who they would probably come after. And I think that's our responsibility to protect our citizens from that kind of liability issue.
Any further discussion, questions? Commissioner Thompson?
It's kind of like accusing the hunters of killing Bambi. It's like, oh, the county commissioners are going to do away with Girl Scout cookies and flower stands. What's wrong with those bozos, you know? So the way I look at it is if we can find a way to safely, prudently continue the activity, because, you know, I like the flower stands. I just want to have it be safe. I like the Girl Scout cookies. I just want to have it be safe. So if we can help people get creative about how they can continue to do it, but do it in a way that it doesn't endanger them and others, because, you know, we're all pointing out, hey, look, it's no fun telling people no for a good cause, but if we can help you get to the right end in a way that's prudent, that's safe, collaboration is compromised to win for everybody. So we're going to continue that, collaborate so everybody wins kinds of thing whenever and however we can. That's what I'd hope we're doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Banks.
Hear me? Sorry. This question is for the sheriff. Is this ordinance change going to help or hinder you?
Well, I'm not really sure on all the rules for enforcing it. I've read through our ordinance and it's a little bit difficult. It seems like there's more of a process than making it easy on deputies. Historically, we've had ordinances that said the fine is X number of dollars. It's an unclassified misdemeanor. There you go. Makes it easy. I've really not ever been involved in problems with flower stands or things on the right-of-way in the past. I mean, it just really has rarely, rarely come up. So I don't know. I guess it's to be determined.
Okay.
If I may, that question might be better directed at Gail Hendrickson, who's in charge of code compliance, who is who responds to these complaints. Gail, if you're available to speak to how this has an impact on your department?
Right. So as county council pointed out, and sorry, this is Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. As county council pointed out, we are complaint-driven, so we will not actively be going out to pursue potential violations. But if someone were to respond to them, we would be obligated to follow up on their complaint. To date, we've probably had about two complaints in the past year related to some sort of business activity in a right-of-way. So I'm not foreseeing a large impact on the department at this time.
Okay. All right. Is there a process of enforcement developed with this ordinance change?
So the code process is actually baked into a different chapter of the county code, and that process would remain the same, which is we receive a complaint, we investigate it, we either validate that there is a complaint there, and we pursue the next step of action, which would be a notice of warning. If there is no violation that we can document, then we close the case out and move on to the next case.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
There's also an ORS that when things like this appear in the right-of-way, that we give notice to the person. And if they don't move it, then we move it and we bill them for doing that. And that can be enforced, I believe, by the sheriff. At least that's, yeah, I can't say that for a fact on the enforcement end of it, but I believe that's what the ORS says.
I'll have to double-check that. All my experience with vehicles and the proportions of the ORS I'm familiar with, but, you know, specific to vehicles and other things, actively obstructing the travel lane itself. I'll double-check that.
Okay. I just wanted a little bit of clarity of how we're, I just don't want to potentially approve an ordinance change and not have figured out what's going to happen because of it, if that makes sense. I'm kind of, I want my horse and my cart in the proper order. And so if we could have a little clarification in regards to how, either A, enforcement, what the process is, that would be awesome prior to presenting this to the board for approval. So that's just my request. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And as it's presented, this would, this proposed change would come to the board on the 10th. Is that the direction from the commission? Okay. All right. Thank Ted. Next item is the fee waiver request, Sturgill, 1601, Halaile Lane, and it's on page 97 of the packet. Turn it over to Gail.
Okay, thank you. So staff in the planning department has been working with Mr. Sturgill since 2019, when he purchased his property. And what he would like to do is build a single-family home. However, in order to do that, he will need to change the land use designation in the comprehensive plan and the zoning on the property, or at least a portion of the property, in order to shift the zoning line further to the east. In order to support that, in 2019, Mr. Sturgill hired a wetland consultant who completed a wetland delineation on the property. That delineation was sent to Department of State Lands, and they've approved it, and that approval is good for five years. However, in the meantime, before submitting his applications to change the zoning line and complete his delineation, our fees were increased in effect of July 1st of 2020. So our pre-July 1st, 2020 fees would have amounted for Mr. Sturgill to $7,942. That would include an $84 development permit, a $3,718 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment, and then the corresponding comprehensive plan text amendment, which was $4,140. Because of the delay that was experienced while Mr. Sturgill's wetland consultant completed his delineation in support of his application, the new fees went up to $10,085 total. So Mr. Sturgill has submitted his applications now. He has also submitted a $585 payment and has requested a reduction or a waiver of the remaining fees. So the question before the board today that staff requires your direction on is, first of all, is the board interested in considering a fee waiver or reduction for the request of these applications? And if so, do you have a direction that you would give to staff on what type of fee reduction or waiver you would like us to bring forward?
Can I ask a question just about when you would do a lot-line adjustment? Say this was a lot-line adjustment, what would that fee be? I'm just curious.
Yeah, the property line adjustment, we adjusted those as well. And I believe it's 250 now for the property line adjustment. Yeah, 250. So, but because the zoning line and the comprehensive plan designation are adopted by ordinance, this isn't something that we can do in a matter that's as simple as a property line adjustment. The wetland that we're working with, that Mr. Sturgill had delineated on his property, is a Goal V resource wetland. So we have some work on Goal V that we would have to do to amend the text there and then actually do the shift of the line on the map by ordinance.
Yeah, I know that Commissioner Thompson had a question, too. I know that Daniel had come to me and we had talked about this. And I certainly kind of share the frustration because when you do a delineation, you're really determining what that boundary is. Prior to that, usually, it's a wetland inventory that's done years and years ago, and it's not really known where that boundary is. So it's a best-guess estimate when you have that initial inventory or boundary. And then when you do the delineation, it really kind of solidifies and determines where that line is. And I can see when you then do that, you would think that that line in the zone would travel with it. Commissioner Thompson's got a question.
Thank you, sir. Well, the question before us every day, "shall there be development in Platte County? If so, under what conditions?" And we've seen a lot of activity, including our work session last week, where people said, no, we don't want any more, we don't want any more development. We don't want any more activity. And a lot of the folks who were saying that weren't really taking into account that somebody had to develop the property that they live in. Somebody had to cut trees, somebody had to put in fills, somebody had to impact the environment. So this is an extremely loaded issue because there are some people who just don't want to see development, period. There are some other people who say, I bought it, I should get to develop it, kind of get out of my way. Well, when we've got a wetlands, that's a whole different situation, whether we're talking about, you know, the state level, the local level, all of it. That's a special circumstance. And we've got a wetlands that's on kind of the treasure list that I see. I don't, I have a question for Director Hendrickson. When I look at the delineation of this wetlands, I'm not sure what I'm looking at. It's rare, it's precious. What is its significance? What should I make of that? Please help me.
Okay, so the wetland was identified a long time ago, back in 1982 or '83, as part of the Duncan Thomas Report that was prepared when we initially drafted Goal V at the very beginning point in time. point in time when we were required to have a comprehensive plan. The reason I believe it was identified is because it ties into that whole bog area that is critical for the cranberry development. And so it was part of that wetland area. So over time, wetland boundaries do naturally shift. And there's many factors for that. And so having a wetland delineation that's been prepared by a professional, reviewed by Department of State Lands, and has their sign off on it, I think is very good support for the application requests. It's just a matter of, because of the way that we adopt zoning by ordinance, we have to go through this process, and there are application fees. So really, it's not today about whether his his request to move the zoning line has merit, but it's really about how do we want to handle the fees associated with that request?
Okay, thank you. That clarifies. May I ask a follow up question then, please? If, if we're looking at the real cost of doing everything, there's staff work involved with this because the fees are related to the staff work. And this lends credence to what developers tell us, the reason housing costs are high and affordable housing is difficult to build is, is because of what's left. Because the easily built stuff is, is mostly gone. And what we've got is complicated, expensive development sites that are left. That's how I'm looking at it. Thank you.
We've got a couple more questions here. So Commissioner Banks and then Commissioner Webb?
So Director Hendrickson, what are we looking at for like the bottom line of forgiveness that, that this person is requesting? I know you, he, he paid the down payment or paid a payment of 585, correct? And then there was an inflation of price from an original cost to a projected new cost. So, so what is the total forgiveness that this person is requesting?
Okay, so based on the new fee total of $10,085 minus the down payment of 585, it would be a forgiveness of $9,500.
Okay, and then was this person aware of the original cost?
Yes, we did. Back in June of 2020, he was sent a letter by the department with a follow up with the applications and a description at, or line at the bottom of the paragraph at the end of the letter, reminding that the fee, new fees would go into effect July 1st.
Okay, I guess personally, I, I would be able to consider a forgiveness of the inflated cost or the cost change between those two points. But I feel like if somebody was already aware of a cost going into a project, that it would seem a standard that we wouldn't want to set to start forgiving things that a person was already aware of when they entered, when they entered the process. I feel like there is a standard there that, that we can't kind of open that door. Otherwise, we're going to be having this conversation over and over and over again for the next, you know, 18 years. So this is just a personal thought. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Just let the board know, the difference between the old fees and the new fees, that total difference is $2,143.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, no, um, I agree with Commissioner Banks that I, I think this would set up not a good precedent. And I'm also worried about the legal issues of the day that you submit your application for something is the operative date. And, and that, that determines fees, it determines process in consideration of those fees, of those permits, et cetera. And I think this would be I, I think given the cost of a home on this acreage, and I do, I do certainly commend the owner for, for doing this, this, you know, hiring someone to move the wetland. This is an issue that we have all over the county. And the fact that we do not have well-defined wetlands. And so I commend the owner for having done this and basically making his land more usable or a larger part of it buildable. But at the same time, I think that the date of the application is what should determine what the fee is, because many other things also rely on the date of that application. That's it.
Do we have any other comment? Questions? Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you. I'm more in line with, you know, Commissioner Webb as well, because, you know, we had an, an instance of our own. It's, we had previous, you know, old outdated delineations on one of our commercial properties, had to have work done again, and our fees were retroed to our original application date. Because it was not our fault. Basically, we, we went through the due diligence of ensuring the delineations, but they were, you know, like Sandra's can said before, it's some of those are kind of just best guesses at the time, almost. You know, they didn't have hard facts, so they kind of threw the boundaries out there. And if you actually have a professional engineer delineate where the actual line is, and it comes out in your favor, then I think the original application date has to apply.
Oh, it, can I just, just one question out of this. So if I'm reading this, the staff would support a reduced fee that reflects what the application fees were prior to July 20th, 2020, based on the fact that the property owner began the process prior, correct?
That's correct.
So that would be those reduced fees back to 2,000, or I guess that's what, 2143, you said, reduction in the cost?
Right. So the total fee then that Mr. Sturgill would be responsible for would be $7,942 minus his deposit.
Do we have any other comments, questions? Commissioner Thompson's got, got a question.
Just agree with what my colleagues have said. I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you. So we will bring this back as a formal business agenda item on March 24th.
Okay. Thank you, Gail. Do we have any other items on the agenda? Not seeing any. Okay. If none, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody, and have a good rest of your afternoon.